All right, good evening. We'll start the meeting. City Council Successor Agency, the Redevelopment Agency, Housing Authority, Regular Meeting of September 11, 2017. Before we go to the Pledge of Allegiance, which is going to be led by the Scout Troop 321, I just wanted to say that 16 years ago today, we had a terrible situation in our country, and many brave people were killed. And it was a, I guess you could almost say it was a turning point in our society. So I wondered if we could take a moment of silence for that, and to be quite honest, a moment of silence for the folks in Texas, and in Florida, and in Mexico, who are going through some very difficult times with natural disasters. So could we just take a minute and just take a moment of silence, please? Thank you. We'll now continue on with the agenda. Pledge of Allegiance, which is going to be led by the Boy Scout Troop 321. So are you gentlemen going to do it?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the order of the agenda?
We have one change this evening, Mr. Mayor. Staff would like to pull Consent Calendar Item 7C off the agenda and move it to the next agenda, as incorrect resolution has been attached to the report.
I will take 7C out of the consent calendar lineup. Is there any report from closed session, Mr. Rubens?
There's no report.
Okay. Item 5, Presentations. Presentation of Proclamation to Kai, I assume it's Kai, Hill, and Connor Grayson with Boy Scouts 321 upon receiving their Eagle Scout Award. So I've got proclamations for you gentlemen. Does it work? It works. Why don't you join me up here at the podium, gentlemen? Start with Mr. Hill. Sorry, Mr. Hill. This is always one of the best and fun times to do stuff like this, because you guys really worked, I know, to get this stuff done. So I'm not going to read all the whereas's and the whohas's and whatever, but I'll just read a couple of things. I guess your project was improving the front of Arundel Elementary School by landscaping and constructing a school sign, as well as some other things to improve what the notification is there. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. And let's get the other one here. And for you, yours was refurbishing the learning and play spaces at Rosalie Rendez Center, which is down in Redwood City, right?
It's in East Palo Alto.
East Palo Alto, that's right. East Palo Alto, involved painting the walls, fixing and organizing the closets, mounting grab bars in the bathrooms, installing wall lights, a fan light, and a big lift, little library. So why don't you guys, just for a minute, tell us, I just wrote, read the words, but why don't you, for a second, tell us what you did specifically on those? Go ahead.
Okay. So my project was to improve the front of Arundel Elementary School by laying a new landscape and constructing a sign for the school. And the sign was especially helpful to notify the address of the front of the school and to build school spirit. The project first required to have the site cleared of a big juniper bush, and there was a lot of trash in the front of the school. Next, I worked with a professional engraving company to build the sign image before the frame and placing it into the ground with concrete. Finally, the landscape and bark mulch had to be distributed across the site. The bark mulch was recycled by the San Carlos School District and outlines the gravel pathway that was built through the oak trees in the front of the school. I learned a lot of skills on how to manage a project, work with many different organizations, and to measure three times and to cut once.
Great, thank you. Congratulations. What school do you go to?
I go to St. Francis High School.
And what year are you?
Sophomore.
Sophomore, okay, great. Your turn.
Notes, I'm sure it was good. So my project, ECO project, was I was working with my fellow, my family and fellow troop members, and was converting, so we were renovating the Rosalie Rendez Center in East Palo Alto, which, because, just for context, it is, it is for the community around East Palo Alto and Carriage Manor Apartments, which is where the center resides. It teaches adults English and is also a spot for their children to work for homework, to work on homework, and have a play space for them while their parents are learning English. And so what we did there was we, I put in grab bars with my fellow scouts. I set up a fan, I patched a few bolt holes, and I also painted three rooms as well. And yeah, that was about it.
Great. Let's go together. And what year are you?
I'm a senior.
Senior, so you're going on after this. All right. Gentlemen, congratulations. It's always an honor for me to do this with you guys. I know you work really hard to get these things. I never got that far. I probably had about six or seven, that's about all I got, but great job, and again, representative of the great community we have in San Carlos. Congratulations. The next item on our agenda is Public Comment. This is for persons wishing to address the City Council on matters not on the posted agenda. I have three speaker cards at the moment, so we'll start with the first one, Jaclyn Knapp. Hello?
Hello. This is, I'm not too used to using this. This is working okay?
Fine, you're just doing great.
Okay. Since it said I have two minutes, I tried to type up, so I can just read it and don't waste time.
Not a problem.
I'm a low-income senior citizen who gets free food from the San Carlos Carrying Cupboard. I put in a claim on my homeowner's insurance three years ago when a very small piece of eucalyptus branch fell on a car driving by behind my home on San Carlos Avenue. The branch dented the car's roof and damaged the sunroof. I have a record of that claim on my homeowner's insurance and cannot afford to have another claim due to the eucalyptus trees. I was forced to spend $2,040 three years ago to prune my four eucalyptus trees that are about 75 feet tall. A branch that was 11 feet long dropped from one of my eucalyptus trees a week ago last Sunday. It was very hot that day and there was no wind. The weight of even a small branch falling from 75 feet can cause lots of damage. I live within one block of three schools. This creates lots of foot traffic behind my house on San Carlos Avenue where my eucalyptus trees are located. A few years ago, someone walking by in San Carlos Avenue set one of my eucalyptus trees on fire by reaching over my back fence. They can explode. About 17 years ago, I had one eucalyptus tree removed. The cost was $10,000. Now the cost is even higher, and I cannot afford to remove four eucalyptus trees or even keep pruning them back every two to three years at a cost of over $2,000. I plan to get a second opinion from another expert-certified arborist as to the current condition of the four eucalyptus trees on my property. I want an independent opinion as to the disease status and immediate danger posed by the trees to myself, my home, my neighbor's property, passing cars, and the pedestrians on San Carlos Avenue. If his report confirms that they are currently dangerous, I would like to request priority on the city's potential 44 eucalyptus tree removal schedule. Other close by cities have maintained their eucalyptus trees over the years. The City of San Carlos put the responsibility on the property owners. I believe that was unfair, and not having them pruned back properly over the years has made them even more dangerous. Even if the City Council members vote to remove the Founder's Tree designation, which the Planning Commission voted to recommend last Monday, and the city removes the four trees on my property at their expense, it might not be soon enough. I'm requesting a city grant to pay to prune back my four trees if the city will not remove them before the expected winter storms arrive. I am participating in the Rebuilding Together Safe at Home Program, and I believe that pruning my trees or removing them before the winter rains is necessary at this time to keep me safe in my home. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Knapp. Mr. Walter, do some of the trees that we're going to be looking at are some on private property? I just wanted to understand this. Thank you, Ms. Knapp.
Mr. Mayor, yes. In fact, most of the trees are on private property.
Okay, great. So we'll be looking at those trees that Ms. Knapp indicated or talked about?
That's correct.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. All right, thank you for coming. Our next speaker is James Cobry.
I've lived in this city since '62, and this is only the second time I ever spoke to. The first time was a while back when I presented, well, anyway. Anyway, I come to comment on the San Carlos redevelopment, San Carlos Avenue corridor that they talked about last time. And he talked about the Alameda and San Carlos Avenue intersection there. As far as I've lived this town, I don't go through that intersection a lot, but I've gone through it enough to know that, to me, it looks like it's a waste of money to change it. And I figure if we have to do something, he's talking about red light, I don't understand what he's talking about. If we have to do something, why not just put up a couple of signs as, nobody turn on red light? And all those, every, anyway, what I'm trying to get at, it's totally controlled, light-controlled. Now, the second item was about the Arundel stoplight, realizing it's too close to either St. Edward's or what you call, I don't know if he suggests, I don't remember whether he suggested, putting up the light there, but putting up a pedestrian activated light, which is, it's not only, not an original idea in any place, but it might help out. And so, and the third item was Prospect. I don't live on Prospect, so I don't care, but some of those people come and make a left turn, which I come and, I go that way when I go and say Charles, I'm up to, it's Cory Hospital, so if they've got to make a left turn, okay, I don't, not be a deal. Another thing is the people that live across the street in the little dead-end street there have to have some way to turn left, when going west, turn left into that street without any problems. So I don't know whether he, I don't understand whether he had that in mind when he was trying all those things there. Third, well, third thing, this is, what you call, I consider Magnolia through-street or busy-street, because it comes right off, it comes up Holly, then down Magnolia. The city planning doesn't consider it the thorough-street, because it doesn't run north and south, or even east and west very far, but I consider it the entrance to the, up to the people who live up above. And they put up a stop sign there, and when I, when you go there and stop, you have to almost be like an owl, to, you have to turn your head almost 180 degrees to check on a street that you're going, only coming from the, from the south there, a street that you can only see half of it, because it's got a big ass in it. It makes no sense, but since it was considered a thorough-street, the planning, the planning department, I guess it is, considered, and I went up to talk to him and didn't get anywhere. And he couldn't care less whether he, whether he got a, after about a year or so, got a crick in your knee, what you call it. And the last thing we want to speak about, Chestnut and Magnolia, there was one set of yield lines, yield signs, which is okay, I guess, except the people on Magnolia had the yield to a minor side street. Now there's yield signs on all four corridors. I've never seen a concept like that. Usually it's just two corridors that a yield sign should be on. So anyway, that's my gripe.
Okay. Well, thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. And the last speaker is Michael, I'm sorry.
Yurka.
Yurka, okay. I'm sorry, I apologize, I can't read it. My problem.
Good evening. I'm Michael Yurka, San Carlos resident. It's my first City Council meeting. I'm here to talk about the speed bumps on St. Francis Way. I support traffic calming measures, but those speed bumps go far beyond traffic calming. They're very jarring, even at a low speed today. I just tried driving over them at six miles per hour, and even then, you could really feel it in the car. Friends of mine who drive that road, too, they say that it damages their car suspension. Councilmember Olbert, I talked to him one time during the farmer's market. He also mentioned that he had heard of neighbors complaining about the noise just from cars bottoming out when going over that speed bump. And when I talked to Councilmember Olbert, he assured me that they were temporary and that they would be replaced soon, but that was over a year ago. I would suggest replacing them with speed bumps more like scenic drive near Edgewood Road. Those are very effective in slowing down traffic, but they're not jarring to cars. And again, for the record, I strongly support traffic calming numbers, measures. I would support even more speed bumps on St. Francis Way as well, but more gradual ones that slow down traffic without damaging cars. And I'd request that this be discussed on the next agenda.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. I think we're going, those are, Mr. Walter, we're going to be coming back with a whole, with some more, aren't we going to have more talk about St. Francis, as I remember?
Mr. Mayor, what we'll be doing is bringing the project back to advertise again.
Okay.
Because as you remember, we had that.
Oh, that's right.
Had the bids come in way too high.
Right, that's right.
And so we rejected the bids, and we said we'd come back in the fall with the project to go out again.
Okay, okay. That's part of the reason why the temporary became a little bit more permanent, because we couldn't go out to, the bids were just outrageous to try to fix what we want to do. So, just to let you know why it's been there, okay? Anyone else wishing to speak on public comment on items not on the posted agenda? All right, we'll move on. Next item is our consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would move approval of the consent calendar minus Option C.
All right. Is there a second?
I didn't know the thing I wanted to...
There's an ordinance as well. Before we even go there, I'm sorry, Mr. Grokot, do you want to pull something?
Item K.
Do you want to pull something?
Item K.
Okay, okay. All right. So, Mr. Olbert, could you rephrase your motion?
I will, and I apologize for jumping the gun there.
That's all right.
I will move that we approve the consent calendar excluding Items C and K. And as part of that, that we adopt Ordinance Number 1523, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending sections of the San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 10.32, stopping, standing, and parking, creating the Civic Center Employee Parking Program.
A second? All right, it's been moved to the second. Any further discussion on any of these items? Harry Nardole, call please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
And Mayor Griselli?
Yes. All right, moving on to Item 8, 8A, Reports to the Council, Their Updates to Key City Projects by City Department Heads and Staff and City Council Subcommittee, or perhaps folks that don't work for the city. They are an informational nature, and no action will be taken on these items at this meeting. And 8A is Reports to the Council on Update from Peninsula Clean Energy.
Good evening, Council. My name is Tara Peterson. I'm the Assistant City Manager. And before you this evening is just an update on what's happening with Peninsula Clean Energy. With us this evening, we have Kristen Andrew Schwinn. She is the Communications and Outreach Manager.
Welcome.
Thank you so much for inviting me, and good evening. It's wonderful to be here in San Carlos. You have a clip for me, don't you? So as you know, Peninsula Clean Energy is now the official electricity provider for San Mateo County, offering cleaner energy at lower rates. And this is a community choice energy program. So how this works is that Peninsula Clean Energy buys the cleaner energy on behalf of all business and residential and municipal customers in San Mateo County. PG&E continues to maintain the wires, read the bills, do natural gas, of course, and also continues to maintain rebate programs, energy efficiency programs, et cetera. So everyone still gets a bill from PG&E to reduce confusion. One of the great aspects of this program is it gives customers choice. Everyone now gets a choice of their energy mix, a 50% renewable energy with ECO Plus, 100% renewable energy with ECO 100, or the energy mix offered by PG&E. The environmental benefits of the program are quite substantial. For the average household that switches their energy mix from PG&Es to Peninsula Clean Energies, the equivalent in greenhouse gas emissions that are avoided is equivalent to planting 10 tree seedlings a year and growing them for 10 years. Or if you choose ECO 100, it's equivalent to planting 23 tree seedlings and growing them for 10 years. When you aggregate the benefits across the entire city of San Carlos, again, the numbers are impressive. And we estimate that in one year, with the modest savings on electrical generation that we offer, that will add up to $834,000 in one year across all accounts in San Carlos. And also, the greenhouse gas emissions avoided add up to 32, more than 32 million pounds annually. That's equivalent to the carbon sequestered by more than 13,000 acres of forest in one year, about four times the land mass in San Carlos. That's a lot of trees. We have more than 13,000 accounts active in San Carlos right now, and we're proud to say our opt-out rate is quite low. It's an average of 2% around the county, and also an average of 2% in San Carlos. San Carlos actually is in the top five cities for voluntary opt-ups to ECO 100 across the All our accounts have now been transitioned to Peninsula Clean Energy, except of course those who've chosen to remain with PG&E. Two notices were sent before accounts are transitioned, and then two notices are sent afterwards as well. And to ensure our customers are well-informed, we also chose to send an additional mailer, helping people calculate the savings on their bill, and an additional mailer to our discount customers, such as people enjoying low-income discounts, or discounts for medical baseline customers. Those are customers who may have a medical appliance at home that requires electricity. We actually offer them an additional 30% discount on their electricity generation. We sent a separate mailer to those customers to explain that their discounts continue automatically, they don't have to do anything. Our key message continues to help, to be helping people understand the changes on their PG&E bill now that they are Peninsula Clean Energy customers. We really enjoyed working with city staff in all of the cities, including here in San Carlos, to help spread the word, and we look forward to working with you on helping to get out the word about the How to Understand Your Bill worksheet we have on our website, the video. I enjoy doing presentations with community groups and getting the word out about the fact that many of your customers have opted up to ECO 100, including, of course, municipal accounts here in San Carlos. Here's my contact information, and of course, Councilmember Johnson is also quite knowledgeable as he is representing San Carlos on our board and on our executive committee. Welcome, any questions or comments?
Thank you, Kirsten. Questions, comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Good presentation. Just one quick question. I've read, and I can't recall the citations offhand in various news media reports, that there's kind of a, I don't even know if I'd say grilling, but there's been some pushback or attempted pushback from utilities over some of the pricing formulas that are used precisely related to the fact that they, they're grumbling about other services, such as Peninsula Clean Energy, I presume, using the network that's there. It's historically, the network was sort of subsidized by the generating plants, and now that's, that's different when we're buying through you. So just curious if you had any intel or insight into, into what's going on there?
Well, there is... Well, there is a robust pricing conversation on electricity in the various elements among a number of actors in California, and a lot of that is playing out in the legislature right now. And in terms of, it'd be difficult to give a snapshot because things are moving very quickly in the legislature, but I believe actually that might be a good question to direct to Representative Johnson.
Okay.
We had a discussion about this this morning at the executive committee meeting. There has been an ongoing conversation with utilities since this law was first passed in the legislature in 2002, and in some cases, the utilities have actively opposed the formation of CCAs, and in other cases, they've just sort of kind of gone along. Today, the current thing that exists is PG&E is able to charge a little bit of premium on everyone's bill in order to make up for the fact that people opt out. But these kinds of programs, because they've been increasingly successful, is spurring more of them throughout the state, and that, I think, has raised some concern, particularly among some utilities in Southern California, and so they've been working with some legislators in Sacramento to, the proposal, as we discussed this morning, was to have a moratorium on future CCAs forming. We don't know whether that bill is going to get any traction. It wouldn't have an impact on Peninsula Clean Energy since we've already formed. But I suspect there'll just be continued kind of ongoing conversation and, you know, differing perspectives between the local community choice energy programs and the utilities. And I think the situation's going to evolve over the coming years.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, Cameron. That helps. And it sounds like it's a, not necessarily a rapidly moving, but sort of a fluid situation, so it's hard to tell how things evolve.
Yeah, I think that's true. I think, as I say, we don't see any specific threat to the San Mateo County version. It's just as several other counties, particularly in Southern California, move forward, there's questions and pushback and political conversations and things like that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Kristen. Nice presentation. I'm curious what the effect of someone who has solar energy has, or what the interaction is with PCE?
Great. And I'm actually a new solar energy customer myself. We just put panels on my house in Pacifica, so I'm also a Peninsula Clean Energy customer. So we very much support local clean generation within our own county and the economic development and the jobs that that brings. And so when a net, when a house with solar is selling some of that energy back to the grid, say it's a sunny day and you're out and your panels are pumping out more energy than you're using, Peninsula Clean Energy buys that energy back at the retail cost rate plus a penny. So that's more than PG&E pays for that energy. And so it's a little bit of a subsidy, but we think that's worth it in order to really help folks in San Mateo, put solar on their roof, in San Mateo County, put solar on the roof and have that local economic development here.
So being a PCE customer is not a reason not to have solar?
Oh, no, not at all.
Because we just flipped the switch on ours last week.
Oh, congratulations.
If I may interject, being a somewhat longer-term solar provider, then it sounds like the Collins family. I was also surprised to see that Peninsula Clean Energy basically does the net offset calculation every month instead of once a year, which is what PG&E did historically.
Yes.
So to the extent there are benefits, they actually flow through to you faster.
And those credits always roll over, you never lose them. And if we owe you more than $100 at the end of a year, we write you a check. And then, if we don't, then those credits always just roll over to the next year.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
I just wanted to say thank you for coming tonight. You know, it's been a pleasure to be on the board and to represent the city of San Carlos on the board. I think this has been a big success story for our county. As you know, we projected opt-out rates into the double digits, and now we've had opt-out rates at below 2%. And that's put the organization in a really great position, not only to purchase renewable energy, but those funds are going to be used to fund additional clean energy and energy efficiency programs throughout San Mateo County. And then the other thing, one of the real regional benefits is that it's not just like we're going and purchasing power from existing generation. Because of Peninsula Clean Energy, new generation is able to form. Most significantly, there's about a 200-acre solar site in Merced that has signed a long-term power purchase agreement with Peninsula Clean Energy that is going to be constructed because of the demand that's being created by Peninsula Clean Energy. So it's just, it's been a great success, and I think the team has worked really well together. So thanks for coming and sharing some information with us tonight.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. All right, we'll move on to item 8B, reports to the council on citations for damaged license plates. Chief, how are you?
Good.
Good.
Good evening, Mayor Griselli, members of the city council. Greg Rothus, police chief. I'm here before you really briefly to talk about the concept of mutilated license plates. It was a question that was brought up from council, so I just want to go over quickly that violation and what's going on in the community with respect to that. California Vehicle Code 4464 says that a person shall not display upon a vehicle a license plate that has been altered from its original markings. And unfortunately, some people are doing that. What is happening is, as we've moved into more optical character readers, such as bridge tolls for the bridges, red light cameras, and automated license plate readers, the way to avoid those is to, there is ways to avoid those to alter the rear plate. And by altering the rear plate, these optical character readers really can't figure out which car it is because they almost all read rear plates and not front plates. So there's a variety of ways to do that, and just like anything else, you could probably figure it out on the internet. But here's an example of one license plate. You can see the front plate on the left, it's kind of banged up, but it's not, the painting isn't really messed up. You would normally think that the front license plate would be worse than the back, but in this case, in all cases, the back looks worse than the front. So in this case, you can see the, what's basically happened is the reflector off that license plate has been removed by a substance, and that plate is not readable, and it's been altered. In this case, the same. It doesn't look quite as ugly, but if you look closely to the plate, you can see all of the white from around the letters has been taken off, all the reflectors. That can't be read by an optical character reader. Here's another thing that people are doing at times. They are putting little stickers or something on their numbers so that it makes it difficult for the optical character readers to read that particular character, so it doesn't read the plate at all. So we've had some of these, obviously, in the community. We've probably issued maybe 100 citations in the last year for these. They're basically just fix-it tickets. People have to go get a new plate. It is against the law, obviously, to alter your plate. It's, it can be a felony if you're doing it to, you know, avoid payment of some sort. But we don't go that route. We just, we don't attribute blame. We just write a fix-it ticket and tell people to fix their plate. So, like I said, we've written about 100. I've been told that those, we're seeing less violations lately. I'm not sure why. And it's not a strategic enforcement mission for us by any stretch of the imagination. It's just another equipment violation that we write, so.
Okay. Questions, Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Greg. Very helpful, as always. I actually was trying to remember, because I got a fix-it ticket a few years ago for an expired tag on my car. I think at the time, it was a $25 fee. I obviously had to get the new registration tags, and then I think I had to pay a small fee down to Redwood City, and I actually had to show up and pay it. But anyway, can you walk me through what the process of clearing a fix-it ticket is?
Sure. The fees, the fees change a little bit from time to time, so I'm not really sure what it is. The first is to show proof of correction.
Right.
And you can do that here, just walk in the police department anytime. You can even, if you're out and about, and you see a police officer who's not busy, you can ask them sometimes, and they can just look at it, and they'll sign that proof of correction. And then you can just send it in and pay whatever the court imposed cost is, $10 or $25, depending, and they will, because they'll send you that via mail. So it's proof of correction payment.
I could have avoided going down to Redwood City. I could have just...
Yeah, you can do it anywhere. You can ask anybody.
Not that I try to do these things, but if one of them happened again, I will now know I won't have to spend the time going to Redwood City.
All right, Mr. Grokot?
So a question about, that wasn't included in your photos. For instance, today, I just happened to be following a vehicle that was, looked like it hadn't been washed in 10 years. That included the license plate. I'm going to get my car cleaned next week. So is that part of the mutilation?
No, it's a separate offense to have anything, a trailer hitch covering a license plate so you can't read it. Anytime a license plate is not readable, it's a separate offense. This particular offense deals with being altered, so it's an intentional act. And so this is intentional, but there are other offenses for not being able to read a license plate. Maybe there's mud covering it, or those kinds of things.
So can you walk us through that? What happens in those instances?
It depends. If they can't read it, they'll...
No, I mean, well, I'm specifically talking about if it's, and I've seen a number of these, and, you know, it's like lately, people seem to be against washing their cars. And so, you know, the back of them, especially, just like the rest of the car, is dirty. In the case of the one I saw today, it looked like the guy had driven actually through a lot of mud. I saw one previously, a couple weeks earlier, where it looks like they had gone down a road with construction and tar had flown up, and so the license plate was all speckled with tar. What's the procedure in those kind of cases?
It's the same. It's a fix-it ticket, but obviously, if it's mud or dirt or grime or something that's easy to wash off, it's likely the person will just get a warning and be told, hey, you got all this mud, can you?
Clean it up.
Go clean it up, please, because you don't want to get a ticket for that and then have to go through the hassle of doing it, do you? And the guy, well, no, 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 I don't want that. And so, you know, something like that. But when it's obvious that it's been altered, or something's permanently done to it, then we need to give the extra incentive for somebody to fix it.
Now, in some of these cases, like there's actually someone who's a good friend of mine, and he used to own a business here in town, and he was quite upset when his wife got a fix-it ticket because he, you know, he at least claimed he hadn't done anything, but the police officer saw his wife's car parked downtown, gave her a fix-it ticket. And the biggest complaint was having to go through the process of going through the DMV and getting a new plate and having to pay, I forget what the fee was, to get the new plates ordered and go through that whole process. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Sure. You know, first of all, we don't attribute blame to anybody when we see these violations, whether it was this particular person, or their spouse, or a member of their family that did it, or whether there's some defect in the plate. In most cases, we always take a picture of the front plate and the rear plate. And what we find is the front plate looks really, really nice, and the back one's all jacked up. So that's a clue that somebody's messing with the rear plate. But we don't really attribute blame. We just ask them to fix it. And so, you know, the only thing I can say about that is the fine's low, and there has to be some incentive for people to make sure that their plates are readable, because the state loses an awful lot of money for stuff like that. It's getting very common. There's stuff on the internet and YouTube on how to do it, you know, when people are avoiding tolls and they're avoiding ALPRs. And so I'm sorry that it's a pain for people to do it, but, you know, we issue those only when we believe that that plate has been mutilated, and they just have to fix it.
And one more question, a little different than the topic of mutilated plates, is vehicles, and I've heard about this, where people buy a vehicle, and then they just simply don't put their plates on because they try to go as long as they can without, maybe because they commute and go over bridges and don't want to pay the toll. But can you speak to that?
Sure. That's also a problem, but for different reasons, and we've been working and enforcing that pretty strongly lately. What we're seeing with respect to burglars, residential burglars and auto burglars, is that they're using really nice new cars, and they're driving cars with paper plates. And so, because they know they can't be detected by, you know, if a witness sees them, it's just a car with a paper plate, they're not detected by ALPRs, they're not detected going over a bridge if they're coming from the East Bay. And so we're seeing, we had a recent auto burglary behind REI, two cars were broken into. The suspect vehicle was a 2017 Honda with paper plates. So our deputies have been enforced to, have been directed to enforce these paper plates. If it's somebody who lives in town, they just bought a nice new car, we can certainly dust them off and say, I'm sorry, you know, go ahead on your way. But others, you know, it's nice to know who they are.
Now, when you say paper plates, maybe you can update us on, Kevin Mullen was trying to pass a bill to require Californians to actually put on a temporary plate, a paper plate, as you're describing, when you buy a vehicle. Like I know, being from Ohio, that's the way it was, you got a paper plate that you had put on your vehicle. Is that what you're talking about? And where did that bill end up?
It should be more clear, actually. That's what I'm talking, what I'm talking about is a paper plate would say something like Melody Toyota. That's it.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And so that's the problem, and they'll keep them on there for a long time. And so we'd be very supportive of anything that would help identify that vehicle, because it's a really common tactic for burglars.
Like, yeah, like I say, Kevin Mullen, he was talking about, I think him and Jerry Hill together in concert, putting forth a bill that required you to put on a temporary, a real temporary plate. I don't know where that bill ended up, but, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Okay, moving on to item nine, presentations, demonstration of LED lighting and aesthetic treatments for the Holly Street US 101 pedestrian overcrossing project, and a portion of this item may occur outside.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Before we move outside, would it be possible to take the item that was pulled off the consent calendar so we don't have to come back in? Or do we have to come back in?
Come in for 10. We're going to have to sort of come back in.
We do have to come back, well, somebody has to come in. The mayor has to come back in to adjourn the meeting, but I was actually going to suggest, because I know they're still setting up out there. They were, you know, anticipating to be up and running at about eight, so maybe we'd run through the rest of the agenda and then come back to that at the end.
And right, it's 7K.
I was right, but for the wrong reason.
There you go. So, Mr. Grokot?
Oh, that's me.
That's you.
So item 7K, just to explain for those who are watching, is the city going ahead with a project to fix a mudslide that occurred last winter behind the church that's...
St. Charles first.
St. Charles on the Alameda, and it's down below. And I just wanted to make a comment that I applaud our city for doing what I think is the right thing to address this issue, but I think it highlights an issue I brought up a while back. We did write a letter to the county asking them to address what's going on on Edgewood. And this past week, I actually watched a documentary on mudslides, what causes them and so forth. It's very interesting, but it, watching the documentary, but it heightened my concern for what we have going on along Edgewood Road. That whole stretch there on the, from Crestview up to the 280 interchange is mostly failing or has segments that look like they're about to fail. And I simply do not think the county is doing justice to that situation by ignoring it and simply putting up cyclone fences and so forth. I think more needs to be done, and they need to address the issue. And I'm, again, grateful that we are addressing the issue that's inside our own city boundaries.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion for 7K.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve item 7K.
Second. All right, moved in second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
And Mayor Griselli?
Yes. All right, move on to 10. Council members, reports, subcommittees, regional boards, committees, commissions and committees. Mr. Olbert?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I must have missed something. Once again, I thought we were also perhaps suggesting items for future agendas, or is that a different item?
You've got me flummoxed here. It's 10A is council member communications.
Okay, well, actually, let me just put it under the heading of communications.
Sure.
Two things. One is, there are a number of residents in town, and different people have probably approached different members of the council, who are organizing efforts to support some of the communities and public institutions in the Houston area, and I suspect shortly in the Florida area, in order to deal with the impacts of the hurricanes that have barreled through[1774.13] Florida area, in order to deal with the impacts of the hurricanes that have barreled through there. And I was reminded that some years ago, the city, I believe that a resident's urging had adopted past Christian in Mississippi. That's correct. And I just wanted to see if the council was interested in having this item brought back, having staff do a little work and perhaps do outreach to the community to see if there are particular communities like San Carlos and the affected areas that we might want to consider for adoption.
I think that's a great idea. Yeah, it's a good idea, too.
Okay.
So we'll bring that back. Staff can spend a little time on that. Could maybe by the, maybe by 30 days, because it's going to be something that we want to try to get together sooner rather than later. All right?
And then the second item, I wanted to see if there was interest on the dais. Wouldn't directly come back to us, at least not immediately. I've been hearing a growing chorus of complaints and concerns raised by residents of San Carlos about, I guess I will call it driver behavior on roads. And the two things that seem to get cited to me a lot are people making left-hand turns at traffic lights when the traffic coming the other direction has the right of way but may hesitate to start moving forward. There's sort of growing incidences of people diving in front of the oncoming traffic. And the other one, which frankly, I do hear about even more than that, is the incidence of J-turns on Laurel Street. As people are going in one direction on Laurel Street and they see a parking space on the other side, and they just whip across the line and go there. And so, my question is this. If there's interest from the council, is this something that we could ask staff to work with the Transportation and Circulation Commission to see if they can come up with some suggestions that we might consider adopting to try and deal with either or both of these issues or other things that may come up in the course of discussion?
I would support that.
Yep, absolutely. I'd be in support of that.
I'd be happy to listen to solutions, but short of lobotomies, I'm not sure how we're going to fix it. But, you know, but no, I think it's fine to discuss it. I had somebody cut and do the same thing to me, cut in front of me on a, you know, the quick turn. And then, of course, on Laurel Street, I always wish I was deputized because I could make a lot of money for the county. But, yeah, no, I think we can talk about it, but I just wish we could get information out to folks, but there are a lot of crazy drivers out there.
And, you know what, Bob, I agree with you. By the way, I'm not suggesting that there's a magic solution out there.
I know that.
But a couple of people did approach me, and maybe they've approached others as well, that they saw incidents. And now I'm talking about the J-turns on Laurel Street, where in the excitement to get to that parking space, people have, because other, you know, pedestrians cross Laurel Street at different places, and they've seen a number of near misses. And I'd really like to try and do something to avoid having that kind of accident.
No, I agree with you. If there's something we can do, we do. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one item. I looked at my past activities the last couple of weeks and really wasn't much going on. But I did attend the Chamber of Commerce Car Show on the East Side on Saturday, and it was very well done. Lots of old cars. Saw a lot of people I know that I didn't realize, some of those old cars. But I thought it was a great event for the chamber, and hopefully it'll be something that they'll do again next year.
Okay. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things. One, I had an opportunity to participate in the San Carlos Day of Service yesterday. This was organized by just a few community volunteers who felt like they wanted to do something for their community. The staff kind of pitched in and helped a little bit, but it was really sort of a grassroots effort. They, as I understood it, they had over 250 people out volunteering throughout the city. I participated in doing some, putting in some new planting and a new tree at Burton Park. But there were kids from the key club out there painting and picking up trash and doing all sorts of things. I think it was a really great event, well organized. They're planning to do it again next year. I thought it might be nice to recognize their efforts and give Lucy Rica and her organizing committee of the city coin. So I wanted to see if folks would be in support of that.
That's fine with me. I think...
Fine with me. It just, I believe, and we can do it as a council. I believe any council member can do that.
Anyway, I just wanted to say that I think some recognition was in order. And then, and then lastly, you know, we've been talking, the next item that we have tonight is the Holly Street 101 and the pedestrian bridge and the interchange. I just wanted to let folks know that that has been agendized or will be agendized for the Transportation Authority for some additional funding consideration on November 2 at 5:00 PM. I'm hoping that perhaps the mayor and the city manager and maybe the Public Works Director could attend that meeting, so.
Would you send me an email on that one?
I will do so.
I'll put it up on my calendar.
Yes. And anyone else who would like to attend as well and speak on behalf of that.
Mr. Collins, another shot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one last item. There was an email that came today that was regarding the Caltrain noise from their horns. And starting on Wednesday, they're going to, I'm not sure they're going to silence them, but they're going to be lowering the volume. So anybody that didn't see that on Facebook or on any other medium, that's going to be in on Wednesday, and I'm sure that'll be a great relief to anybody who lives within probably a couple hundred yards of the Caltrain line.
Okay. Anything, Matt?
Just ditto with what Ron said. I also attended the car show, and it was very well attended. The only thing I'll add to what he said is walking through there in that neighborhood, both getting to it and then when I was enjoying the car show, a lot of interesting businesses over there. There's different kinds of, there's a bakery over there now that does the bagels. There's breweries, wine, you know, wine outfits and so forth where you can go do wine tasting. And I encourage our citizens to go investigate that neighborhood over, it's, I guess, Washington, Ron? And what's the other one?
Yeah, Washington is where two or three wineries.
Right, yeah.
Washington and Center.
And Center.
Yeah. I would have gone to the car show, but I had farmer's market duty yesterday for two hours. It was Ask the Mayor. So I tried to answer as many questions as I could and took some notes and talked to staff this morning about some questions that folks had. And not necessarily solved issues, but certainly pointed folks in the right direction to try to help them do what they need to do. I think that's a great thing that all of us volunteer for that various days, and people come up and put, actually can speak to somebody who's going to follow up on some stuff. And not that staff doesn't, they do, but they have lots and lots of things to do. And we can make a list and sometimes hand it off, and things can get done. Also, we had a letter from Diwa Shrestha and her husband Suraj, I believe you say that that way, commenting on Deputy Trickett and Deputy Duval of the Sheriff's Office and Captain Demetey and firefighters McCaughey and Petroki from Fire Station 13 that responded to a 9/11 call on August 7. And their little baby, 22-year-month-old, was having an issue. And instead of waiting for the ambulance, they took right away the baby to the ER in Sequoia. And needless to say, it was a positive outcome. And so I thought that we might be able to honor those five individuals, perhaps at a future council meeting, if staff could perhaps organize that through our fire chief and our police chief to have those gentlemen come in.
That's a great idea.
All right. What else do we have? Okay, the staff comments on city administrative business.
Just one this evening, Mr. Mayor, just like to thank our city clerk, Crystal Moy, and all of our department staff for their hard work on implementing our new agenda management system, which tonight, at the last meeting, we had dual systems working. Tonight's our first standalone with the new system. And they've been working on this for months and months to get it up and running, and it's worked with just very few, very few issues so far. So thank you to staff.
May I add my personal thanks to that? Because now all I have to do is carry my phone, because I can just do this here. By the way, Ron was showing me something earlier. Are we actually, the video is live from, that's a change, too, because it used to be, I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, it's live now.
Great.
Well, great job, then. Happy the system's working. That's good. Okay, I guess we have demonstration of LED lighting. Do you want to say anything, or are we just going to go outside, or how's this work?
Mr. Mayor, so we'll go adjourn the meeting, go outside to the area by the library parking garage, where we have some of the arch features and the, which have the LED lighting that is kind of inside them. So you get a sense of what the effect will be when you see that as after those would be placed on the bridges for the Holly Street project.
Mr. Rubens, can I adjourn the meeting and then we go out, or should I?
That is part of the public meeting out there. I was just going to say.
So we'll just adjourn to the outside and then come back and adjourn. And you have to be here the whole time. And you have to be here the whole time.